Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Monday, December 5th, Board of Selectmen meeting. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, let's remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This week, we were made aware of the passing of Mary Sarlin.
Sarlin.
Pardon?
Mary Sarlin.
Sarlin.
Yeah, that's right.
Sarlin.
Sarlin. Mary was assistant town clerk for a period of 22 years, and we pass along our condolences and praise to the family and friends. Announcements. The tax classification meeting, tax rate classification, there'll be a meeting tomorrow night, and this is the notice. The Millville Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 6th, 2016, at 5:30 at the Millville Senior Center in Millville. The purpose of the hearing is to review the issues, the issue of allocating the local tax levy among the different classes of real estate and personal properties. The options and impact of adding different tax rates for residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property will be presented by the Board of Assessors. All interested persons wishing to be heard will be afforded the opportunity to be heard at this time, and that'd be tomorrow night here at this facility at 5:30. And we have tomorrow night as well. It's gonna be a busy night for townsfolk. At 6:30 PM is the holiday tree lighting. Sing-Along will be part of the agenda, and it will be led by Paul Donnelly. This is under the auspices of the host, the trustees of the PAC, with special thank you to the Millville Fire and Rescue Departments for all they do. And finally, I'd like to congratulate the fire department for a third-place trophy in the Menden kickoff parade this weekend. They fancied up, dressed up the forestry truck, looked great, and they got a trophy. Next on the agenda is minutes. Tonight, we're voting, or will be voting, on the November 21st meeting minutes.
Make a motion to accept the November 21st meeting minutes as written.
Second. Row.
Aye.
Aye. Public forum. Peter, do you have anything to say?
(laughing).
It's been so in the summer and Christmas time. We go from four to one.
Correspondents. KP Law.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you'll see, you know, with our recent fall election at the state level, question four, which had to do with the legalizing of the recreational use of marijuana, never mind looking at setting up dispensaries or the medical use, that passage actually has quite a big impact on local communities. And you'll see there are two correspondents I put in. One is from the KP Law, which actually provides a timeframe relative to what that particular question on the ballot meant. And right away, actually, on December 15th of this year, personal use of marijuana will be legal for persons at least 21 years of age, according to the general laws of Chapter 94G, Section 7. And that provides that individuals, but not businesses, will be permitted to engage in a range of activities. And what this update that we've received from our legal counsel is trying to give us a guide as we move forward. I can tell you already, our town planner and also this board was looking at recreational, not recreational use, medical dispensaries, and also the medical production issue, which had already been brought to our town. But this is certainly going to throw another sort of monkey wrench into the process of trying to plan for this. I will tell you that on the state level, even the legislature is trying to figure out how to grapple with this particular passage of the question four, and they're trying to figure out how they're actually gonna set up the guides and guidelines that are gonna require everything from enforcement and also being able to comply with the law. So there's quite a few steps, but I thought this was a good correspondence. It did a nice outline. And then, Tabor CMRPC is also hosting on December 15th, an actual planning meeting session for municipalities on this very issue. And I know that Hillary Carney, our town planner, has already expressed that she would like to attend, since she was looking at helping us draft some new bylaws related to the medical part for marijuana production that we had been approached for. But now, this is another aspect of it.
I'd be considering attending that as well.
Being able to attend, yes. And that is going to be, I should probably say where it's going to be. It's in Worcester?
Union.
Yeah, at the Union Hall Station, yes, on December 15th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And I expect that that probably will be attended by quite a few people. The last piece of correspondence I put in as on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, one of the nicest things that they do do for both anyone who has an interest in serving the economic development needs of the Blackstone Valley is they have a holiday jingle and mingle. This is the holiday season, so they have that expressed for this coming week, December 7th, from 5:30 to 6:30. I only say it because it's located this year at the Valencourt Folk Art at Manchuck Mills, which if you have not had an opportunity to go there and see what it's like, it's really beautiful, and it's a nice event. So I hope that we'll be able to, maybe a few of us attend, but at any rate, it's good to be able to be among those people also interested in trying to further business development and economic development. And it's a pretty, pretty place.
And that's the day after tomorrow.
Yes, that is, isn't it? Yeah, so it would be Wednesday.[495.31][495.31](laughing) I'm telling you, the Christmas season is already here. It's easy to get lost in the spirit between holiday tree lightings, jingle and mingles, and all that kind of stuff. And that's all I have for correspondence at this time.
Next on the agenda is annual licenses.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is that time of year where you would go through license renewals, not only for retail alcohol license and on-premise alcohol licenses, but also our common particular licenses and also Class II licenses. So there are a number of establishments in town that have requested to have a renewal of their license, and have included in your packet a memorandum of the various licenses, the type of license, the holder of the license, and also their license number. What I would ask, and I can express to you that the license packets for renewal had gone out to all of these establishments, and all of the inspections were done. We had only one minor issue with one establishment in which the fire chief and the deputy fire chief had said that you should approve the license conditional upon their final sign-off, and it had to do with a fire extinguisher. And so they wanna go back and do that, and they're doing that this week. So other than that, the compliance has been there. There's a second piece to the alcohol license this year. The state is going to actual e-permitting online, which basically means we will not be forwarding a lot of the documentation that we forwarded in the past. We are gonna be streamlining that. We'll keep those documents, but going forward, we'll be uploading basically all of those people that you have granted a renewal. And that's about it. We're basically acknowledging it. So they really have streamlined it. They're piloting it as of today with one community, and they expect that to go live. So by before December 31st, whoever you approve tonight, I will be acknowledging that with the online database.
Why don't I read the list of license applications?
And if you have a hold.
If you have any comment on that, put a hold on it. Century Liquors, retail alcohol license. Georges Variety Store, retail alcohol license. Mill Tavern Pizza, common particular license. Millville Motors, Class II license. Polish American Citizens Club, on-premises alcohol license. Pool table license. Automatic amusement device license. Entertainment license, common particular license. Potbelly Pub, on-premise alcohol license. Pool table license. Automatic amusement device license. Entertainment license. Common particular license. Uxbridge Auto, Class II license. I would entertain approval if there are no reservations.
So all the paperwork was filled in, everyone signed off as they did formally?
They did, and I actually visited every establishment and hand-delivered the different packets. And one of the things that I will say is that everybody was extremely cooperative, you know, despite having lost our town hall. You know, we were working very diligently to make sure we had the packets complete. That having been said, everybody was really gracious in getting their paperwork back, and also the fees that, you know, that go along with these licenses. I think they all regarded them as an important piece of doing business in town. So I was actually really pleased with that and being able to check off all of those things. And anything that was missing, with the exception of the one piece that I expressed to you, you know, if somebody didn't have a business certificate or a just expired, they came right in, they, you know, signed up and gave the fee for that. So we have those minor things that they go through, and if they were close to actually needing to actually renew their certificate for their workers comp or whatever, we were able to identify that, and they've gone ahead and done it. So, yes.
Motion to approve the list is read. So moved. Second. Row.
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Excellent. I'll save all of the signing of the multicolored licenses at the end for you to do. Thank you.
Old Business. Lease negotiation, American Post Legion, American Legion Post 411. I have a comment regarding that, and I would tend to wanna have a, I'm sorry.
Executive session?
An executive session next week, if you're available to discuss and prepare for a lease agreement for the Legion.
Did you wanna do it on the December 19th meeting, or did you wanna try to do it next week? I just wanna make sure I'm clear on that. December 19th would be our next meeting, but if you'd like to do it next week, we can, well, actually, no.
No, let's do the 19th. My feeling is on the 19th is our next meeting.
Okay, that's what I had written down. I just wanted to clarify. And I'll work with town council to get an initial draft on that, and then we can work with the board to figure out how you wanna proceed.
Next is BMR Capital Planning Meeting. Mrs. Callahan and myself attended a meeting with the superintendent this past week, and we were provided with a list of capital, potential capital expenditures for the elementary school. And I think we need to meet again as a board, maybe on the same evening as the 19th, to review those items and develop a plan going forward to address them.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I know that, I think we just jumped a little bit ahead in the schedule, in the agenda, which is fine, because we gotta get to this anyway. What I did wanna say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Maybe I expressed to everybody that these are not my glasses, and these are not my glasses, but I'm trying to balance between them. So if anybody was having trouble looking at it, I'd say it was me. And I only say that in actually conjecture here. So I would ask the board that we had this, it was, you know, not a really in-depth meeting with the superintendent, but he shared this maintenance and repairs list and didn't express that he wanted to come before the board and preferably maybe on the 19th. I had already talked with the chairman quite some time ago about understanding that in the future, the Millville Elementary School site may have some capital needs, and I had taken it upon myself in waiting for the superintendent's list, which I had asked he'd provide us, and he just did last week, that once I had that, I would reach out a second time to the head of the Mass School Building Authority, Mr. Jack McCarthy. And I will be sending out an email tomorrow to also let the superintendent know, but Mr. McCarthy is going to do, and is making himself available to come on December 21st, which is Wednesday, for a 10:30 AM tour of the elementary school, in which time we can talk about these maintenance repairs, which your board will have talked about with the superintendent in advance. But I think it's really great to be able to get Jack out here. He's a great guy. If anybody's resourceful about some of these kinds of items that we know that would be hard-pressed to find the money for, there are some things that I think we can use their expertise and their assessment, and the sooner we do it, the better.
I have something to say on that.
On which?
I believe the HVAC system, we went through this one before, there is what they're responsible for and what we're responsible for, and if I'm not mistaken, they're responsible for the HVAC. They're supposed to maintain them quarterly with an outside vendor, and we found that they weren't doing it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If I'm not mistaken, going back, Rowan, we had this discussion.
Couple of years ago, at least.
Couple of years ago, and we found that these units were not being kept up. And this is their responsibility.
What I was gonna say is, I think one of the things that we might be able to point out in that next meeting is to kind of talk about that. That's why we have the superintendent.
But I believe, Jennifer, it is in writing.
Okay.
Somewhere, there's what they're responsible when they take care of the school and what the town is responsible.
The general maintenance.
Yeah.
I do know, yeah, there could be some things also. I am quite aware that there are things relative to school building efficiency that I know I've worked on these kinds of things in the past with Mr. McCarthy, even before he became the head of the MSBA program. And when we're looking at the oil tank and the boiler system as a whole, or the windows, 'cause that became a part of the punch list here, those are kinds of things that we may be able to get some real direct assistance from, regardless of whether it becomes the school or us as an authority.
What I'm saying is, there is a list.
I'll look. Thank you for telling me that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How was this list that you had in front of us? Was this list given to you?
Yes, this is not my list. This is a list that was given.
So do you know how this was compiled? Do we have that information?
Well, the superintendent, I think, wanted to have a meeting.
The exterior does.
Yeah. There's a couple of steps, I think, that the school. Hold on.
And then when it rocks, it's optimal.
Okay.
That's why I'm saying this.
So the superintendent had said to me in passing, I wanna say quite a while ago, that he was gonna put together a list about some of the capital needs of the school, and eventually wanted to have a time period where he could come before the board. And then the chairman had expressed to me that he had met up with him at, was it the town meeting?
Town meeting.
Town meeting. And he had asked if it was possible for the chairman to come by, and then the chairman asked me, and so we both went. And this was the list, and then the other ask was, can I come before the board, which I had suggested the 19th. Let us initially present this to you. I think he'll be able to, you know, express why these things had come up. And more importantly, I can do some homework in the interim, as Mr. Lara has suggested. There may be some other additional information. But this is to share some information and to start talking about capital projects. But more importantly, there might be some things on this list that we definitely know would be good to have done in terms of the maintenance of the building, even though it's in pretty good shape. We even heard that from the superintendent. But I'd like to get the School Building Authority assessment and weigh-in for things that relate not to building a whole new building, but to actually some of the things that might be on this list. And I can see a few things that I know that the School Building Authority can be of help. So we'll have the meeting on the 19th and then have the tour on the 21st. I thought if they do them back-to-back, the sooner we do that, the better, and we'll have a better understanding.
'Cause as I'm looking at this, and I can hear my counterparts inside of me saying what I'm thinking, you know, words like useful life and inefficient doesn't tell me, windows being original to '92, well, is there a problem with the windows? I mean, that's what, like, I have three kids there, and never once have they said, "I need a sweatshirt 'cause it's distracting." So I'm just wondering the quality of, you know, you can have something that's old, but if it's still working.
Think they're reaching.
Then, you know, we need to do that. And we also have to be mindful that there is a cap on what they are to provide and fix versus what we, for our building, provide and fix.
That's why they always look at the big numbers.
And I'm not against taking care of what we own by any means, but we had this conversation. It was in the cafeteria, it was at the school, and it was under Mrs. Shaver Hood, and we were fighting, I was on Capitol then, and we were fighting about who was gonna paint the doors and replace screws. I don't wanna go back to that time and place, but I'd like to know, like, you know, was this with the staff? Was this with the principal? Was this with the janitor staff? Or is this like them just saying, well, these are kind of a punch list of things that are coming up? That's why I'm wondering how this list was developed. And then, a second thing is, I think it was a year, maybe two years ago, Mr. Himmelberger said that he was going to provide us with a five-year plan, so I'd really like to see that.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I just know that that has been thrown out there, and he supposedly has one, or maybe in draft form. I think, you know, we're being asked to make our capital contribution and maintain our building. I wanna know what his plan is. So I think they go hand in hand, so we need that.
I'm pretty sure Mr. Ferrari, when he redid, did some service to the water tank, said that was a 10-year plan on that now, and it's only been three?
About that, yeah.
So we really have seven years left, though.
Well, is that the, that's not the water tank outside that. I mean, this is, 25 years old would be the fire suppression tank in the back.
Which he was inside of that. We drained all that down.
They did that one, too.
We resurfaced the inside, put new anode.
That might have been under.
Anode rods and everything.
Was that Davis Perry? That might have been under him, so Himmelberger might not be aware of that information.
Right. And I think the chief, when I shared the fire suppression thing, he had mentioned to me that the superintendent had also touched base with him about, you know, I think this all just kind of gelled in a short period of time in talking with us or the fire chief. And I do know that I've already been on the hunt for the water tank past repairs and everything.
'Cause Mel or Bob Ferrari could answer those questions.
And the chief thought that it was not that long ago, too.
No, I don't think it was more than three years.
So I will look and see, and it'll give us some time before the 19th, but more importantly, I think it'll be a good time for you to ask those kinds of questions. So I would suggest we have the fire superintendent, he's asked, let him come before us, and at the same time, you know, we do know that we have some things that we should be looking at, that if we don't have to, you know, take the full financial responsibility for it or can get some assistance through the School Building Authority, let's find out what things could be permissible, and then, because some of those things take some time, and I know Jack McCarthy will be as helpful to us as possible. His mission is to really help school buildings, you know, be safe, structurally sound, and improved upon, and it's not just about building brand-new schools.
Right. So I, for the sake of the five-year plan, I'm gonna make an official motion that I would like to ask the superintendent of schools for his five-year plan.
Second. Row.
Aye.
Aye.
That's official.
That's official.
That's official enough.
Right there. I'm gonna back up.
Yeah, sure.
To Old Business, just give us an update on the DEP.
Yes, I did put that in as Old Business, but it's a significant piece of business that this board and several boards have invested in it, and it has to do with a particular property that just, I think, through the diligence of both town council and more importantly, this board's leadership in trying to be on the side of residents. We have a property off of Central, on Central Street. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, that's right.
Basically, all we can, we should be saying is, this is in the hands of the DEP now?
It is. Yep, it is, but there was, we can actually, because it's an actual order, let the public know that as part of an administrative consent order, the DEP has taken a lead, and there were several things that they were asking for compliance in this order from the landowner. One was that they wanted any remaining debris on the property to be removed, and it would be accounted for, and it would go to a proper site for removal. The second piece was that they had deemed that they would do test pits, deep test pits, not just soil sediment sampling, which is what the EPA had been in town to do. Again, we're talking about trying to find out and ascertain if this property or some other properties may be responsible for water contamination, well contamination. So we don't have that evidence yet, but what they did do is order test pitting, and they also ordered that the property be evaluated using a magnetometer, which.
Magnetometer.
A magnetometer. I always wanna put the extra syllable in there, I don't know why, but this is to actually look for anything that might be metal debris that is buried. So the DEP has made this order. I know that they had been out here, they are still on target with our board and the town of wanting to follow up once they complete their analysis and their assessment of the property. But I think this is really good news for the local, our local town, because they've taken the lead along with the EPA, and our goal is to have a convening of a public forum in January, hopefully by the end of January, when all this information is in, and we can share it with the public.
Thank you.
Yep, that is good.
You done?
Oh, to get her. Okay, yeah.
I'll get her.
You get her? Okay. Thank you.
Keep your mouth.
Candy cameraman.
Candy cameraman. Thank you.
In January, MMA will be conducting its annual meeting and trade show in Boston at the Heinz or the Henson Center. All the MMA meetings I've ever been to, the attendees tell how good a program it is or the knowledge that can be gained there. And if I can find someone to take care of my dog, I'll probably go in town to participate or sit in on some of the workshops. There are 19 workshops available, there are vendors available, and that occurs on the...
20th and the 21st.
20th and the 21st.
Is that Wednesday? Good question. I don't know. Usually it's, I think, Monday, Tuesday. It would be, actually, it's on a Friday and Saturday.
Saturday.
Yeah. And if anybody would like to go, you know, together, I mean, as it gets closer, I'll make another announcement, and it would be good, even if over two days, you know, if somebody can go one day and the other day. Or if you would like, I can organize the details for that, but that would be great. Thank you.
New charge on BMR Capital Planning. The Chestnut Hill. The Chestnut Hill Community Association on 12-9, they're having an open house, a holiday, and they graciously invited us to attend. Time on that is-
I think it's 6:30?
6:30 in the evening. There's a Yankee swap or some kind, $10 limit. But, you know, in the past, the Community Association has hosted a select board in weekend meetings and that kind of thing. And so I just announced that we've been invited and-
Friday, the 9th?
The 9th.
Is that what you said, the 9th?
It is, yes.
It's Friday.
I put Wednesday, by accident myself, but it was, I believe, the 9th. Yes, and I will, I'll verify that. Kathy Anderson was really good, she called, and I was on the road when I took the message, but I'm pretty sure it was the 9th at 6:30.
I have an event with my girls that I'm going with, so I won't be around, just so you know.
If that date has changed, I will email you promptly tomorrow, but I'll verify that with her.
I won't be able to go either. I got an event at the Public House.
Okay.
Just hit some horses.
It's that time of year. Horse drawn slaves, right? I said, "It's that time of year, horse drawn slaves."
I'll go to that.
You would like to go? Okay. All right, I'll make sure of the date, because I'm just now thinking, you know, so I'll text you tomorrow.
I represent the town.
Okay, all right. That would be nice, John.
Town Administrator reports-
Wait a minute, hold on. You still in the select?
Yes, you are.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Where do we stand with our finances?
This week, on Thursday, I'm meeting with our accountants on both sides, the one that has been looking retroactively and the ones that are looking forward. We're in that final phase of their presenting on, to myself, to the inside administration, our tax collector treasurer. And then what we will be doing is on, we're hoping on the 20th of December to have our own budget forum that will actually talk about that. Because the tax classification is tomorrow, Thursday, we're going to have all of that final reconciliation, and they're going to present to me administratively and to the staff administratively that have to do with the budget process, whether it's our tax collector or our assessor. And then from there, we're going to have our regular workshop meeting and/or budget summit meeting, which we talked about trying to do, and I mentioned this quite a while ago, John, I don't know if you were here or not, but we were hoping to have it, like, on December 20th, the week, the third week of December. So I'm hoping that's where we'll be. So we'll have that information, I'll be sharing that with you, but they have to report on it first and make sure that they're all on the same page. So they have been working really diligently, I have to say. Our recap is almost virtually all done. You'll be able to set the tax classification, and so we're in good shape. And then what happens is that will go to the Department of Revenue. They may tweak whatever we have, you know, decided upon tomorrow in terms of our overall classification and where the eventual tax rate will be set and tax bills will go out. But after that, then the Department of Revenue will look to be certifying our free cash. And I know that, you know, this time of year, because of the amount of volume that they're doing, we expect that, you know, probably in the early part of January. So everything should be, everything is on target. I'm really happy to say. I know people have been working very, very hard to meet those deadlines, and we are so far. So knock on wood, you know, after tomorrow, I think we'll be in good shape. And then by Thursday, you know, we'll be able to really share the information, because a lot of this has been back and forth, you know, to make sure that whatever needs to be put in place from the previous fiscal year is solidly there so that we can base our, you know, not just our current, but doing our budgeting for the next year.
Right.
That's all really good stuff.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Just nothing on this Selecton's firm, this Thursday evening at the BMR, they will be talking again about regionalization. Their meeting's scheduled for 7 o'clock. They're looking for people who are interested in serving on that committee, which they have, they did previously, to look at the school and the needs and the use of the buildings, just so our residents are aware. It's been floating around in social media, but I haven't seen it posted. I haven't looked either, any other places. So just want to let people know that that's, we, it's starting again.
Yep. I can't believe it.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'm good.
Everyone's good, okay. Town hall update.
Yes, I'll keep this somewhat brief. One of the things that I think we recognize is we had a terrific town meeting in which I'm really happy to report and very humbled by the fact that the townspeople voted unanimously without really any hesitation on the decision and the direction that this board, along with a couple of other boards in town, has been articulating, and that is to relocate to the American Legion Post and allow you to actually start to negotiate a lease for long term. So that part of it's really good, and I want to thank the townspeople really sincerely. It's been very important, and more importantly, thank this board for supporting the administrative perspective on this, as well as supporting the staff to being able to get to another place. So I want to say that. Also, as far as the town hall update, the last meeting, both John and Roland had expressed concern about looking at the current building as it's getting to the colder weather and starting to take measures to actually make sure that the building is both secure for the colder weather, but more importantly, starting to look at how we're going to address decommissioning the building since we're not going to be in it foreseeably in the near future. I'm happy to report that Renad HVAC, right before the holiday had come out and started the work and finished it last week, I think there was a lot of concern that if we didn't keep the temperature really high in that building on the second floor, that we could have pipes that would burst and be more of a problem. And I know, John, you came by, and you want to talk about that? Sure.
I just want to let you know that when I went in there, the air system, the pneumatic system, because that building runs on air system, the air tank, which is supposed to be drained, was full of water. So that means the whole pneumatic system was full of water. So the system would have failed. So we gave them direction to drain it, and that's the end of it, because it would have failed anyways, and it would have froze, and we would have had a flood. So they drained the building. There is a couple of things that I need to talk to Roland about. Some of the electrical needs to be rewired just to get us by on certain things, but other than that, we're moving forward to mothballing it.
Yep, and I want to say thank you and thank you, because we're not really kind of knew that the cold weather was coming, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't have a bigger problem on our hands. So that part of it's been done. As far as other things that we're looking at, the big thing was to make sure we get a date lined up in being able to negotiate with the Legion Hall. I have been in touch with the commander, and that's why I think if we are going to schedule an executive session initially to find out the direction that you'd like to take, and then schedule another meeting with the Legion Hall membership to decide how you want to go forward with that. So I don't know if you have any other desire in moving in that direction? Would you first like to see sort of a draft and then meet, you know, an executive session, and then schedule a meeting with them?
Yeah.
Okay, that's how we did it with the license agreement, and I thought it worked very well. And then we can, you know, develop a host of two people to go and do that.
We need to move forward on that.
Okay. All right, so we will do that, and I'll come up with some possible dates, you know, from the 19th on, and we'll try to grab that into your calendars as soon as possible. As far as some of the other things, I will leave the next meeting to maybe be able to update you even more pointedly on all the things. Both the chairman and I had attended, and I have been attending anyway, a roundtable in which we have the project manager from Valley Tech, who's been meeting with us ever since we discussed the possibility of working to move into the Legion. And all of the different trades have been reporting, and we have a lot of things that are going on actively, from replacing the boiler to the painting department, to the plumbing department, all the things to make the building handicap accessible and make it a true public building. So I think that the next meeting would be a good meeting to get a full report on that, since we've had so much going on between the town meeting and everything. But I will tell you, every day, there's things that are happening up there, and it's very exciting. And I know people are very mindful of a timetable, we're trying to do things as quickly as possible, but we're also trying to make sure it's done right. And Valley Tech has been phenomenal in that regard. And anything that can't be done by Valley Tech, we're going to be looking to try to coordinate that with professional people that have the skill set to handle those things. So I would say that that's pretty much for the town hall update. The second component is that we finally received our financial auditor's independent auditing report. I put the paper version in there. I did speak today with the head of the company that did the audit, and they typically come before your board, and I was asking, since we'd like to officially look at closing off that year and to get a report, I think would be healthy from the auditor directly, I wanted to see if you would be amenable to placing them on the agenda for a 10-minute presentation, and that'll give you guys an opportunity to look at the report that is quite substantial between now and then. And then if you have questions, they can talk to you about that.
Is this a new firm?
No.
Is this the same old one?
And they are sending bound coffees.
What's that?
You got the nice binding.
No, that's the old one.
Because I was like, we're going to get them like that. They just send it electronically?
Actually, Marilyn, you know, had forwarded it, and what I did is wanted to get it in your hands as soon as possible.
That's fine.
So that would be that, and then you'll have the bound coffees the next time. And if you guys would indulge and think it's a good time to have, I think it would be great to have them come in on the 19th.
They usually do.
Yep.
Yeah.
So as long as you think that's a good thing, we'll do that on the 19th. The next item on, I'm really excited to report that once again, we've been able to secure another grant through the diligence of both the police chief and Trish in the police department. We both had been applying for two things that have to do with security. And the first one, you'll see a grant that was awarded through the insurance rewards program to the police department, and it is for dash cams for the police cruisers. There was a requested amount of $2,725, and that was actually-
Awarded.
Awarded, yes. We had another more expensive grant proposal that had to do with installing camera security system for the Legion Hall, which is our future town hall. And because of some of the more successful negotiations that we've had recently with the insurance company, you know, they, I think, if it wasn't being covered in this grant proposal, it should be hopefully covered in a different way. So I do want to thank the police chief for having done the estimates for both of those grants. And again, it's a good tribute to the fact that we're looking at any place that we can find money that could be helpful to some of the goals that we have in town, and public safety is a big one. And I'm really pleased that at least that one grant was awarded and that we have the information that we're going to need in trying to articulate the need for the other security one, that I'm holding out that we'll be able to be awarded some assistance. And this is not an easy thing. I mean, they get over 256 grant requests, and so the fact that they were awarded even the one is substantial. So I want to say congratulations to the chief and the department for being able to do that.
Yeah. I feel that it definitely needs to be funded, even if we have to come up with the, because of the remote location of that facility.
I agree. And we can go over that part, you know, as part of our ongoing negotiations, I think, with the insurance, that that would be part of that. The next item on the agenda for my update is the abandoned housing initiative. It's a strategic demolition fund. I think I've already indicated to you that anytime I can go after a grant funding source that will meet what's a priority for you guys as a board, I will do that. So this is another, I think, phenomenal program that would actually fit an important need that is timely for us. And it is a program that is set up by the Attorney General's Office. They're making over $500,000 available for demolition projects across the Commonwealth, and they've divided up into four different areas, and the Worcester Community Housing Resources Incorporated is the actual entity that is going to be administering $125,000 for demolition projects that are specific to communities that are intent on wanting to remove blight and deal with issues that potentially are jeopardizing the public safety. We know that we're going to be looking at Central Street for a major overhaul, and every single one on this board has mentioned the Mug Pub property. And I know it's a priority for you, and I know that one of the things that's only holding us back in some ways is finding funding to actually level the building and to repurpose the site. I have spoken with two people who are involved with this program, who actually are the ones who received the grant proposals. I explained the fact that this particular property would be, I think, right up the alley for funding, and they were excited that, talk about putting a proposal, so I'll be putting together a grant proposal. And if you look at some of the costs that it actually would provide assistance to handle, they would be able to cover everything from physical demolition to the trucking of demolition debris, the disposal of debris, removal of hazardous materials under a licensed site professional, and they have a number of other things that they would handle. So I not only learned about this particular program and had a lot of information, but I'm going to bring before your board another program that I actually made the people who handle these kinds of grant applications to think about differently. And that's about blighted properties or properties that really need to be cleaned up, not just in terms of building, but properties that may have blight that revolves around businesses. And the Attorney General's Office also has a receivership program that helps communities like ours that are in a difficult financial position to be able to execute a lot of the legal things to try to get a business owner to clean up their property, even when, you know, it means that you need to have enforcement. So I'm going to look into that some more, but they were very interested in the perspective that I had about how do you take a small community that has very limited enforcement ability and get actual property owners to comply with cleaning up the blight that exists on their business or on the property that they have, even if it's not a physical building. So that's going to be something that I'll hopefully get some more information on and bring before you. But I wanted to get approval from you to actually move forward to do an actual application and let you know that, I think it's great. It's a, hopefully, it can be a great win for us, especially if we're going to do Central Street, who would look awful to do Central Street and then still have that building that, you know.
Then we'll start with the Mug Pub.
So we'll start with the Mug Pub. So I will be doing that, and, but I wanted to let you know that that's the program, and thank you for that direction. And that's it for the town administrator update.
Thank you. Next signature.
Yes. I have a lot of licenses to be to sign. They're all color-coordinated, and what I can do is start you out on this side with a license, and I have 10 minutes as well. what I can do is start you out on this side with a license and I have 10 minutes as well. So now when, now when you go in, every time you go in to one of these establishments, you can look up on the wall and you'll see all the ones, you'll say, geez, I remember One of the final things while you're just finishing, because it has to do with licenses, I did want to say that after the first year, in the early spring, I'm hoping to get a group of different members from the boards about what we really want to, I mean, there are some things by state law, we have to actually ask these license holders to actually comply with, but there are some other things that just relate to what we as a town want to have done and I think there's some open interpretation that has maybe been more onerous on the business owners and I think we need to sort of sit down and think about what it is we really think is most important and reevaluate, not new ones, but, you know, the ones that have been in existence, so we can make it perhaps even more streamlined. So I will be trying to put that together later, but I learned through my own process that we could do a sort of reevaluation ourselves on what we're asking them to do. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elevator.
Okay, thank you.